At this time, I'd like to call to order the March 3rd, 2015 regular scheduled meeting of the Davie County Board of Education. Our first order of business is to adopt the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Have a motion by Mr. Drexler? Do I have a second? I have a second by Ms. Horn. All in favor? Motion carries 7-0. We're moving on now to closed session. And I will ask for a motion to go into closed session to preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to the North Carolina general statutes listed on our agenda to discuss personnel matters protected by state law. Do I have a motion? Have a motion by Mr. Drexler? Do we have a second? We have a second by Ms. Owens. All in favor? Motion carries 7-0. We're now in closed session. Welcome. At this time, I would like to reconvene, excuse me, the March 2003, I'll get there in a minute, March 3rd, 2015 regular scheduled meeting of the Davie County Board of Education. At this time, if you would, please bow with me for the invocation. As we gather here this evening, I express thanks for this day and all of its blessings. I ask this board to be mindful of the business we are about to undertake. We are thankful for everyone in attendance tonight. Further, we are thankful for the opportunities to govern and the freedoms we enjoy. We pause to remember the students, faculty members, and families in our system and community who are facing challenges. Our positive thoughts are with them. As always, we seek wisdom to make the best decisions for the students and citizens of Davie County. I'm in. At this time, I would like to welcome troop 2581 Brownies and Daisies to come up and lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for it it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies. We appreciate you coming and sharing the pledge with us. I would also like to point out, we've got a Davie County Commissioner with us tonight, Mr. John Ferguson. I'm glad to see him. At this time, we're moving on to the board report and I'll point out a few important dates for March. Tomorrow, the board will be at Davie High School for advisory council meeting with early college Davie High and Central Davie. The 10th, we have a district-wide partners breakfast at the Family Life Center at First United Methodist. On the 11th, we have lunch at Ellis Middle. The 24th of March, we have advisory council at North Davie with William R. Davie, North Davie, and Pine Brook. And on the 31st, we have volunteer breakfast at the Family Life Center. And I think that's all we have for now. And I'm going to move back. I've skipped a step here. At this time, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes for the February 3rd, 2015 meeting. We have a motion by Mr. Drexler. Do we have a second? We have a second by Ms. Horn. All in favor? Motion carries 7-0. Sorry about that. At this time, I'm going to hand it off to Dr. Hartness for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. It's good to see a good crowd out tonight and good to have you to discuss school business. This month has been quite interesting. We've had some unusual weather patterns and those patterns continue this week. So tomorrow, we have a chance of rain and a high of 69, and then Thursday, a chance of rain and snow showers with a low of 22. So it's been quite a week. And yesterday, I was out at William R. Davie Elementary School and I met Olivia. And Olivia just made me smile and made my day, and I loved her shirt. It says, "I love snow days." So Olivia, thanks for making me smile because this is the time of year that school administrators are either loved or hated. So y'all can pull that down now. I don't want to see my face. Olivia's quite cute, though. We'll talk some more tonight about snow makeup days. That's later in our agenda. But we appreciate also the board members for coming out to our parent advisory meetings. Those have been quite beneficial to all of us. We've enjoyed some healthy conversations with parents at schools about things that are going well and things that we need to improve upon. And this week, we'll meet parents at two more of our schools. So that's a good time, and I appreciate the board taking time to do that. That's important for our parents and the community, and it helps us to get better. We're continuing the discussion around testing and assessments. We'll discuss third grade testing a little later in our agenda. But we're also part of a statewide conversation on testing and assessments and making sure that those are beneficial to teaching and learning. In fact, next week, we have a meeting with some colleagues in Davidson County schools to talk about putting our ideas together and maybe developing a proposal to be part of a regional pilot for next year to do something different than we have been doing in the state. So we'll bring some more information to you if that develops. We're anxiously awaiting the opening of bids, and we have our architect and our civil engineer here tonight to give us an update. Bids will be open on March 31st, so we're awaiting that to get the high school construction underway. We're working with our budget committee to continue to develop a budget to bring to the board in April. So we'll bring that to you toward the end of April for consideration. And in the meantime, I think we just need to pay attention to what's happening in Raleigh with the legislature and get an idea of where things are going for the next budget biennium. I want to editorialize for just a minute and just tell you how much I am thankful for Davie County. As I have observed some things going on this past month, we are very fortunate to live in a community of people that really care. Every month, you see the donation report. You see the thousands of dollars that come in from donations. This month, you're going to see a line item there of Hillsdale Rotary of $13,000 for weekend food bags. That's just incredible that we have that type of support for children. I attended a Dragonfly House event this past month that raised thousands of dollars to support children who have been abused. The Juvenile Crime Prevention Council hosted a day-long meeting called "The Power of Community" to talk about how we can prevent juvenile delinquency. I see that now there is a group formed in Davie County to address homelessness, and that's a critical issue. And we have children in our school system who are affected by homelessness, and there are people who are not only talking about the issue but doing something about it. We see the Davie Community Foundation and the Meben Foundation stepping up to help us with literacy issues and other issues within the school system. You know, I'm very hesitant to start naming things because you always leave someone out. But it just becomes so evident to me every month as we participate in events and charity efforts and we see the number of people who not only talk about issues that we have in the community but that are willing to step up. That's special, and it's something that we should never take for granted. So I just wanted to say how much I appreciate our community not only supporting the children and the public school system but supporting each other, and I think that's special. And I'll leave you with this. Don't forget to turn your clocks one hour forward on Sunday night, or on Monday, you'll have your own one-hour delay.
Thank you for that update, Dr. Hartness. At this time, we're moving on to the architect's report, and in that report, we're going to talk about the new Davie High School project, and I will ask Clark Pierce to come up.
Good evening, Chairman Fuller and board members. Dr. Hartness, always happy to be here and give you an update on your school project and its progress. Dr. Hartness already stole, stolen half of my presentation when he gave you the bid date, which I think you all probably already know. But the project is out to bids. We don't have a lot to report other than that fact. We've got eight contractors that were pre-selected, pre-qualified. There was one that we heard from today that has dropped out. They were following another project of similar size for the last couple of years, and it's actually out for bid same time. So we're down to seven contractors currently. We do have a pre-bid conference next Tuesday, the 10th, at 2:00 here in this building where all the contractors can come and ask whatever questions they may have, and we can perhaps share with them some additional information that we may have. One thing that I shared with Dr. Hartness earlier today is that we're considering whether or not to, by addenda, allow them to bid the masonry lump sum. And lump sum masonry with certified masonry contractors, basically, it's a little less risk for the general contractor because you get a better quality masonry contractor. And basically, what that does is the steward of the contractor just typically buys the material and hires a masonry crew or masonry crews to do the masonry. And he purchases all the materials. And lump sum approach, the masonry contractor is responsible for furnishing labor and materials. So it'd be not unlike a plumbing contractor or a mechanical-electrical contractor where basically the GC is hiring a turnkey subcontractor to perform that portion of work. So we're still thinking about that. We're going to get some input from, from the contractors at the pre-bid. I'm sure they would probably prefer that we do that. Our only hesitancy is that usually, in my opinion, comes with somewhat of a premium, but sort of hard to argue, "Well, we, we don't want to pay you an extra premium to get good quality work, so, you know, we'll take what we get." So that's kind of the, you know, the balance of what we're up against. But we'll, we'll discuss that a little further at the pre-bid. I actually had a contact this afternoon unsolicited from the gentleman that represents Carolina's Concrete Masonry Association promoting the same approach. So we're going to be looking into that. A lot of the other major school systems use that on their major projects. Pre-bid, as I said, is next week. The grading, if you've been by there, and I'm sure you're all familiar with the weather and what it's done, there's not a lot that has been accomplished in the past month. Contractor has been working where possible, moving some of the boulders and filling in areas where they've used as bar pits as he's able. But the pad already being in, they're primarily concentrating on the parking lot areas now. I believe the staff parking lot, which is the parking lot to the south of the main entry, had about three feet to go. Is that cut or filled, John? Three feet of fill left to go. And they're also starting to grade as weather allows the entrance drive and the student parking lot. So that's where they are in their progress. We've got a, we've been holding meetings every two weeks with the site contractor, and we'll continue to do that. I believe our next meeting is probably next Wednesday. With that, John Gray is here. If you have any specific questions about the site, or if you have any questions with me, I'll be happy to try and answer.
Anybody have any questions for Clark or John? See you then. Thank you for the update. We appreciate it. Appreciate all the hard work you guys are doing. At this time, we're moving on to student-staff recognitions, and first up is Child Nutrition Person of the Year, and I will call on Dawn Baker. Oh, Mary Foster.
Dawn Baker is not feeling well this evening, so I am going to attempt to fill in for her. Dr. Hartness, Mr. Chairman, board members, I am proud to get to introduce to you someone I have really enjoyed getting to know over the past couple of months at North Davie. When it comes to the children of Davie County, Patricia Howard has the most important quality. She has heart. She has spent most of her adult life working in child nutrition and transporting the children of Davie County to and from school. She always has a smile on her face. She's gentle and kind to every student. She will be that lunch lady a student remembers well into adulthood and thinks fondly of. When they come through the lunch line, she's genuinely glad to see them, and she tells them that. We don't know what a child endures when they go home and at the end of the day, but you can be sure that if they've encountered Ms. Howard today, they got a kind word and a genuine smile. Ms. Howard is what child nutrition is truly about. After almost 20 years of consistent smiles and warmth, she's truly earned this award as Child Nutrition Person of the Year.
Thank you.
Thank you. And on behalf of the board, we want to present you this certificate of recognition, and thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. Y'all don't know what you miss when you don't get those smiles. Thank you, Dawn.
Congratulations, Ms. Howard. At this time, we're moving on to the Spelling Bee winners, and I will call on Ms. Noelle Grady Smith.
Thank you so much. I'm going to ask Jenda Haynes to present these. I was unable to be at the Spelling Bee for the first time in a long time. But Ms. Haynes was, and so I would like for her to take that role. Thank you.
Good evening, board members. After lots of rescheduling, thanks to the weather, we finally held the Spelling Bee last Wednesday in this room. And I would like to introduce our winner, starting with our third-place winner from South Davie Middle School, Bella Thompson, if she's here. Hello? Okay. Bella is the daughter of Jennifer Thompson, and she was our third-place winner. Our second-place winner was Amber McCullough from Carnation Elementary School, if you'll come on up. She is the daughter of Brad and Dawn McCullough. If you'll just stay up here with me for a moment. And then our first-place winner was Kayden Leonard from North Davie Middle School. I didn't see him. He is the son of Valerie Leonard, and Kayden's winning words, in case you're interested, were "macron" and "benefactor." Would you like to have a little test right now and see if you know those two words? Okay. Kayden, of course, will be representing Davie County Schools in the Regional Spelling Bee, which will be held at the Milton Road Center of the Arts in Winston-Salem on Sunday, March 15th. So we certainly wish him well, and we're proud of all of our students. Congratulations.
I'm not a speller, so I am really impressed. And this was the first year I've missed a Spelling Bee, too. Congratulations for your outstanding achievement, and keep spelling, and we, as the board, are so proud of you. Congratulations. Thank you.
At this time, I will call on Mr. Resheer to come up and tell us about William Ellis Middle School's math counts team and their accomplishments.
This year at Ellis Middle School, our math counts team, in fact, I'd like you guys to come on up. Our math counts team took second place in the regional competition, and we have five members here. Let's see here, where that you're standing. Victor Carbone, Ethan Chase, Cameron Lee, Christian Martins, and Zane Holloman. And I was particularly proud of this group. We took second place. We came extremely close to beating a school that has taken first place every year since probably the Civil War. And that's Haynes Middle School, which is a magnet school for highly gifted math and science kids in all of Forsyth County, and they beat us by a score of 158 to 155. We lost by less than half the value of one team round question. And we did well enough that I found out yesterday, because initially, it was going to be only the top team got to go to the state-level competition. Found out yesterday, we did well enough that we qualified as a wild card team to go to the competition as well, and that will be in, on March 20th. I'd also like to point out that individually, out of over 100 kids, Christian Martins took first place overall. Ethan Chase took fourth place overall. Victor Carbone took sixth place. Cameron Lee took 10th. Zane Holloman took 13th. So they all did an impressive job, and I'm very proud of all of them.
I got a math question for you.
You better get it right.
We got five people up here, and we only got four certificates, so we're missing one. But anyway, okay. Ethan Chase.
Thank you.
Cameron Lee. And Christian Martins. Good job.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll get that certificate to you. At this time, we're moving on to the consent agenda, and I will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda. We have a motion by Mr. Junker. Do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Drexler. All in favor? Motion carries 7-0. At this time, we have one business item, and I will, it's adjustment of this current school calendar, and I'll call on Dr. Hart, I'll call on Dr. Wallace to talk to us about that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll start out with letting you go ahead and giving you fair warning that Ms. Horn and I were in a meeting with county leaders, and I made an announcement that night that all board, or all calendar changes and calendar issues are approved by the Board of Education. So that group walked away from there thinking, I said, "Right here's one of your board members. You have any questions, you talk to Wendy Horn." So they kind of chuckled, yet Wendy really appreciated that. So it has been, as Dr. Hartness mentioned, it's been quite the adventure with the calendar. But before you, we have, we've met and talked. We've looked at a couple of different options. We've looked at spring break. We've looked at Memorial Day, which, of course, we understand what that means. And the option to move that, we do have that authority to move that holiday to a different date within the calendar, which we've had to do in adjustment in the early college calendar, not Memorial Day, another one. But anyway, we've also taken a look at June the 12th, but in talking with Testing and Accountability and other staff members, with the EOCs and EOGs, we think it's imperative to retain two days at the end of the school year, if at all possible. So for now, the proposals that are before you here is, comes from many discussions in time. So we, I'll be, try to answer any questions regarding this, these adjustments or recommendations.
Board, I would just chime in here and let you know that we have sent this proposal out to principals, too, for feedback. We did not have any negative feedback from principals. And when you look at the calendar law itself, we are required to have 1,025 instructional hours. With the, the bell schedule that we have in our schools, we far exceed the required number or number of hours of instructional time. We want to preserve as much instructional time as we possibly can throughout the school year, but in this proposal, we're requesting that the Board of Education waive 1.5 days for students. Of course, our staff members, teachers are under contract for 215 days. They will make up the time that we've missed, as well as our other staff will be affected by the, the staff calendar. So that's the proposal before you, and we feel like it will be the best that we can offer. Now, I talked to Mr. Wallace this morning. I said, "Mr. Wallace, do you think we should come to the board and say, 'Let's reconvene the calendar committee, and let's try to build in some break days or snow days next year?'" And as we looked at next year's calendar, we just don't have that flexibility. If we had the flexibility on the front end or the back end from the, the calendar law, we may could do that, but we just don't have that flexibility. So this is what we present for your consideration.
Dr. Hartness, I understand the challenges with that calendar. I've been there. Question for you related, but not specifically about this. Is there a vote for this approval of this without, or you've gotten information back from the principals, all that you want, so you're ready for us to act on that tonight prior to that? Can you give us any, and anybody listening, the update on the conversations that are going around statewide for unregulating or changing the regulations or requirements for the school calendar?
That's a good question, Mr. Drexler. And, you know, every year that I've been a superintendent, there have been multiple calendar bills proposed. We just don't know how the legislature is going to receive that, primarily how the Senate leadership will receive that. There is a strong push by organizations across the state to, you know, there's Save Our Summers Group, there's other groups that are pushing just as hard against changes to the calendar as school districts are pushing to have flexibility and to have exams before Christmas. Whether the legislature will budge on the calendar law, whether they will tweak it, whether they will accept any local bills that have been presented, we just don't know. Typically, the local bills have not been successful in the past.
I noticed on an email, an update that Davidson Lexington City Schools are one of the several that has filed a resolution for that change.
I believe that is accurate. I think there's over 12 or 14 bills out there.
Twenty-four right now.
Twenty-four bills.
Twenty-four right now. But, I mean, when I say right now, it's yesterday, the last time I looked, so it's probably more than that.
This is a big issue. And, you know, typically, the calendar and snow days affect more the western counties of North Carolina, but the east is getting hit just as hard this year.
The ice is bad.
It's a great question.
Thank you, Dr. Hartness. Do we have any other questions or comments?
I would just say I appreciate the staff working so hard to protect those teaching days and learning days for, for students. And it's the first time, I think, in my tenure that I've heard children say they wanted to go back to school after this snow round.
Not seeing anything else. I will ask for a motion to adjust the 2014-15 calendar based on this, this current staff recommendation. Do we have a motion? We have a motion by Mr. Drexler? Do we have a second? We have a second by Ms. Horn. All in favor? Motion carries 7-0.
Mr. Chairman, I would just point out, thank you for, for approving this calendar recommendation. Up until this past week, we were following the calendar makeup days as the board had approved on the original calendar, so it was necessary for us to bring this back to you. Our plans are, and they have been, if we miss a day from this point forward, if it's during the middle of the week, we're going to try to make it up on Saturday. But there may be additional adjustments to the calendar based on the forecast. We'll just have to wait and see.
Hopefully, we're finished with snow, but at this time, we're moving on to public address to the board, and I will turn it over to Ms. Wilson.
Well, we're delighted to see so many fine and shiny and happy faces in the audience. Unfortunately, none of them want to talk to you tonight, so they'll have to do it informally, and we have no public comment tonight.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on now to committee and staff reports, and first up is Mr. Wallace.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board would like to, in discussion with, again, staff, would like to, for you to consider the graduation date for Davie County High School to be June the 13th, which is a Saturday, Saturday morning at 8:30, which we've traditionally done over the past few years. And if, for some reason, we cannot have it that day due to weather, you know, we always try to delay it a little bit if we have to, would be, the rain date would be the following day, Sunday afternoon at 2:00, which is, again, what we've done in the last few years. Also, you can see there that, just a reminder, that we have set the early college graduation date for May the 23rd, and we have to set that one earlier in part to schedule the Brock Building. So that one's, you have approved, and so that one's still set for 11:00 on the 23rd. And so the recommendation will be for the high school, Davie County High School, for Saturday, June 13th at 8:30, and rain date to be Sunday at 2:00, the following day.
In More Eagle Stadium.
In More Eagle Stadium.
Thank you for that update, Mr. Wallace. At this time, we're moving on to student accountability, and it looks like our presenter
It's quite an honor to be here.
It's quite an honor to be here, and I'm really excited to share some good news with you. I'm the LEP Coordinator for Davie County, and the LEP program is in charge of reducing the gap between students who do not speak English and those who are English-speaking speakers. LEP programs in North Carolina have an accountability, and few programs in any school system has an accountability like this. We have to meet three goals at the same time. The first one is students need to show progress in their English. The second one, they have to be proficient, and the third one, they have to be successful in EOG. For that, we have a test, it's called ACCESS. So every year, of course, DPI raised that minimum for students proving that they show progress. They raised the number for students who are supposed to exit the program and the EOG success. And it's very difficult to meet those three objectives at the same time, but I can proudly say that we met those objectives in the previous school year, but even more, we did it for the third time in a row. And only 10 counties in North Carolina can say that, that we have done that. So we received congratulations from DPI, and we did it because we have passionate teachers who are in this profession because we think that precisely because this is difficult is why we are here. And, and because we have an organized program clear with our own accountability, with our own assessment, and with our own audit system too. And because also, we have principals who now understand more and more and more and more about the ESL programs, and we, they support our teachers and the program. And we have done this with only a very tiny budget, and Mrs. Smink is my witness here, with only $30,000, we tried to do our best. To get this for the fourth time in a row, I'm going to make a really big party. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Munoz.
Mr. Chairman, I might also say thank you to Mr. Munoz for his leadership. He is a tremendous asset to our organization. He helps us often with interpretations of very difficult documents to read in other languages and contact schools in other countries, and is one of our lead interpreters, so we thank you for your leadership, Mr. Munoz.
Again, thank you for that update, Mr. Munoz. At this time, we're moving on to another student accountability update from Erin Fuller.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, Dr. Hartness, community. I'm here tonight to give you a brief update on school performance grades. So I'm going to get my... So I wanted to talk to you a little bit about the school performance grades. This year was the first year that our schools received school performance grades. They were released on February 5th with the North Carolina School Report Card. The North Carolina School Report Card has lots of interesting data in it, so if you get a chance, please go to www.ncpublicschools.org and take a look at the North Carolina School Report Card. One of the pieces of data that was released this year is the A through F, the school performance grades. I wanted to give you just a little bit, I did give you very detailed accountability results about our students in 2013-14, back in October, I'm not going to go over all that again, but I wanted to remind you just a little bit about school performance grades and how they get those school performance grades. In elementary and middle schools, they look at the end of grade and the end of course tests that a student takes, they look at the proficiency, the number of students that make a Level III or above, and they look at the growth. They put that together in a formula, and it's 80% proficiency and 20% growth. At high school, it looks at all of the ready accountability indicators, including ACT and your cohort graduation rate, your math course rigor, and your end of course tests. Looks at all of those things, and it looks at the proficiency in those indicators based on the different, ACT has a certain one, cohort graduation rate has a certain one, looks at the proficiency there, and then it looks at all the growth for all those tests. And again, it puts it together in a formula that's the 80/20. It then takes that number and it puts it in a 15-point scale for the 2013-14 school year, and you get the letter grade A through F based on that. Just a side note, for this year, the 2014-15 school year, we will be moving to a 10-point scale, as it is right now in state law. So as we look for how our stu, how our schools did as compared to all North Carolina schools, one of the things that North Carolina said is over two-thirds of our schools made a C or better in the school performance grades. I'm happy to report that in Davie County, over 90% of our schools made a C or better. You can see here that we did top the state in all of our As and Bs, and we were lower in the Cs and the Ds, so that's a really good thing. We did have zero Fs this year, and we're interested to look forward to next year to see what that holds. If you have any questions, I did provide a chart in the board docs that showed the number of schools in each of these categories, this particular chart is on percentages. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Erin. At this time, we're moving on to CTE update and monitoring and compliance report from Ms. Donna McNeil.
Good evening, Chairman Fuller, Dr. Hartness, members of the board, and guests. I am here tonight to share with you the monitoring and compliance review that was presented to Dr. Hartness and myself a couple weeks ago. In October, we had a visit from two of the regional consultants for Career and Technical Education from DPI. They also did a pre-visit by going through data from CTE, from looking at the members of our community, looking at our workforce, to make certain that our career and technical education program is aligning with our community. The purpose of a monitoring visit is to establish the compliance criteria that the school district must follow in order to maintain funding for CTE. We are funded both federally and at the state level to provide our instructors for our programs and also operating expenses for our programs. So that is the purpose of the visit, is to make sure that we are in compliance with your assurances. They actually looked at six different categories. First was the general administration of the program. They looked at our programs that we offer in our schools, they looked at our registration materials that are, that is used in our middle schools and high schools, they took our student registration book, they compared it to the CTE essential standards to make sure that we were aligning our programs with those that are recommended through the state level. They looked at our purchase orders. They came in, they took my big purchase order book, they picked out different purchase orders to make sure that the funding that was represented in those purchase orders complied with all of the regulations to go along with their programs. They looked at our planning, they looked at our workforce community to make certain that our programs that we're offering align to the businesses in our community. They looked at the fiscal policy guide, that is, that governs career and technical education. They made sure that entries in the BASS system, which Deborah's very familiar with, the ABC Transfer Program, our budgets, everything was in alignment. I mean, they were very, very thorough in what they looked for through our documentation. They looked through our curriculum, they made sure that we had vertical alignment from those courses that are offered in our middle grade programs to the high school and on into the post-secondary education. They looked at career cluster documents, they looked at the pathways where we align with community college. Again, they were looking at the registration materials that were used in the high school. They looked at our concentrator survey data, where we contact our concentrators from the prior year to see where they are. So they looked at all of this data. They went through in-service documentation to make certain that professional development was provided to the staff members, to provide them with the most current training that they could possibly receive to go along with their programs. And again, then they looked at the program improvement. Do we have a business advisory team? How often does it meet? They looked at the minutes, they looked at the questions that we discussed at our last business advisory meeting. So again, they were very, very thorough with their report. The report that came back was 14 pages in data, what they were looking at. Marty Toby, the regional coordinator for the Northwest Region, was, he was blown away. He says, "I knew that Davie County was good." He says, "But until I started really digging into the data, I did not realize some of the facts." And he presented those facts in different commendations. Tonight, I have about six CTE teachers, seven sitting here, and I'd like for them to come up and join me right now. Come stand behind me, please. I know they didn't think I was going to do that, but I want them to come stand because they are the reason for these commendations that were mentioned in this report. First commendation, the CTE program in Davie County met or exceeded the state goal in all eight of the CTE performance indicators, and we're measured on eight, and we met or exceeded the state goal in all of those. Seven of the eight performance indicators were met for local benchmarks, and those local benchmarks are set about six years out, so we have been able to maintain, we met seven of those eight, and barely missed that eighth one. The academic attainment for mathematics proficiency rate is the highest in the Northwest Region, and that's about 15 different LEAs, and it was the fourth highest in the state. For their technical attainment proficiency, and this is based on their end of course scores, the proficiency rate is the third highest in the Northwest Region, and the sixth highest in state of North Carolina out of 115 LEAs. The placement results for our students who are our concentrators represented the seventh highest level of placement in the state. Over, and I said over, Mr. Toby reported 758 industry credentials were recognized in Davie County last year. I'm going to say over that amount because I was able to identify several areas that was not included in that report. So over 758 industry-recognized credentials were earned by the Davie County students. This represents an increase of 106 credentials earned over the previous year. That is, a percentage of credentials to CT enrollment is 32.5%. So 32.5% of the students enrolled in one of those high school courses earned at least one credential. So I think those are outstanding accomplishments. Again, all of those go, belong to our teachers, they are the ones that are working with our students, and I applaud them for their high standards and their work in the classroom. Going on with those commendations that were reported, for our PRC 14 and 17 purchase orders, they were all, they said, well-organized and provided detailed information for each purchase. Some of the invoices had written objective alignment to their purchase, which is a best practice. All high school CTE teachers had their own websites for communication purposes. The pathway documents provided by Davie County have served as a model for other LEAs across the state, and those are pathway documents that we work with Davidson County, Lexington City, and Thomasville City as a team that we, that he was referring to there. Collaboration efforts in developing local articulation agreements, quality CTE, back it up a minute, quality CTE career and college promise opportunities, and continued collaboration to offer students a seamless approach to the post-secondary education. And finally, it was noted that Davie County has a strong focus on STEM education. CTE instruction plays an integral role in the district's STEM focus, offering courses such as, but not limited to, technology, engineering, and design, health sciences, horticulture, agri-science, family consumer science, scientific visualization. So all of those courses that we offer through CTE support and align with our STEM initiative at the high school. Very proud to report to you that there were no non-compliance issues noted in that report. So I'm very proud of the CTE program and of all of our teachers. Thank you all very much.
I'd like to say, thank you for that update, and thank you to all the CTE team, we appreciate all your hard work and appreciate all your focus on our students, it certainly is paying off. At this time, moving on to curriculum, and I will turn it over to Dr. Hartness for an update on Read to Achieve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Don't necessarily feel qualified to talk about Read to Achieve like Noel Grady Smith and Jenna, but I wanted to share with you something that's going on at the state level that I've been involved in, and we've talked about Read to Achieve quite a bit, and you all know that's the legislation behind ensuring that our third graders are reading on grade level before they can move on to fourth grade, which is a very noble effort. It is written into law that if a student doesn't pass the EOG at the end of the year, doesn't pass a retest, they are to come to our reading summer camps, and then they're put in a transitional fourth grade classroom until they meet those proficiency levels. Last year, maybe a little longer than last year, we came to you and we talked about local alternative assessments. So the State Board of Education allowed school districts to submit to them what are called local alternative assessments. They're formative interim assessments that teachers can give throughout the year, and if students were found to be proficient on those tests, and they were not proficient on the single day end of grade test at the end of the year, but they had shown proficiency through those local alternative assessments, they would get something called a good cause exemption. They would not be required to attend summer school. Oftentimes, we would invite them to come because we know that they still need reading support and might benefit from that. Last year, the legislature came back and revisited Read to Achieve, and they indicated that they wanted the State Board of Education to set the cut scores, or the minimum score on all of those local alternative assessments that local districts were using and had indicated were valid and reliable assessments. In your board packet, you have a letter from the Deputy State Superintendent dated October the 8th, 2014, and this letter outlines on page three, the eight local alternative assessments that are being used by school districts across the state. And the Department of Public Instruction came to the State Board and said, okay, if we're going to set a cut score for these local assessments that are not state assessments, then we're going to use one measure. And the measure they chose was a Lexile measure. And Lexiles is a scientific method that was developed by a company called Metometrics out of the Raleigh-Durham area, and you'll see Lexile levels that are set for books and libraries so that, and it helps teachers to gauge the readability of the book, not necessarily the age appropriateness of the book, but if you've got a student that's a slower reader or a fast reader, that helps you guide them in different directions and select books that are appropriate to their reading level. Unfortunately, the Lexile level is just based on two things, word frequency and sentence length. So you run paragraphs and samples through a model, and a computer generates this Lexile level from that. The Department of Public Instruction said, we're going to use this Lexile level as the cut score for all these local assessments. There wasn't a specific linking study or correlation of those local assessments to that Lexile level to determine was that an accurate measure. As soon as this letter came out, we started looking at our data, and I said, this does not look right. This Lexile level of 725 that they set appears to be rather high for a student to pass or be proficient in third grade. And in fact, when we started looking at our data, we said, this doesn't match. We have students who, you know, are not meeting this level on the assessment, but they're passing the EOG, or they're passing the BOG at the beginning of the year. So I began to question the state on, this cut score doesn't look right. And there was pushback. So I contacted Renaissance Learning, who is the developer of the STAR reading assessment that we use, and I said, Renaissance, can you look at this? Because if the state is setting this cut score, and your product is not aligned to the end of grade test in North Carolina, and we're out telling parents that your child's on grade level, but they're not, then we've got a problem, we don't need to use your product any longer. Because where we found the cut score to be set was not third grade level, but about fifth grade, fifth or eighth month. So we were asking students to be at fifth grade, eighth month, to be proficient on third grade reading. third-grade reading, which is not appropriate. So Renaissance said, "Send us your data." And they allowed Erin to upload our secure dataset to their secure server, and they analyzed our data, and they came back and said, "In fact, you're right. This cut score is not aligned to where your students are performing on our product." So we submitted that report to the state probably in, was that November, maybe, Noel, sometime in that timeframe? And I still got pushed back from the state. So I said, "Okay, if you don't believe the data in Davie County, then let's release statewide data for all the students in North Carolina who are being assessed with this local alternative assessment. Let's see what that looks like." Well, after weeks of debating back and forth, they finally released the statewide data for about 75,000 students to Renaissance. You have Renaissance analysis of those 75,000 dataset attached to your board agenda. That was released back to the state last week. So now the state not only has data from Davie County, but they have statewide data. And the statewide data, again, shows a disconnect between the cut score that was set by the Department of Public Instruction and the performance of students across North Carolina. I know this is complicated. The bottom line is, the state has cut, set the cut score so high for these local alternative assessments that they're rendered useless to us. I never would want us to lower our standards, and that's not the request we have, but we want local assessments to be closely aligned and be able to predict a student's performance on the end-of-grade test. We don't want that to be higher, we don't want it to be lower. And I've had conversations with the State Superintendent, and I said, "June, we want you guys to get this right. This is not just a number on a page in a document or memo out to superintendents. The way this is being used is, this is a safety net for students who may not perform well on that end-of-grade test on that one day of the year, but have shown progress throughout the year and are to have a strong correlation between this assessment we're using in the EOG as being proficient." Because the high stakes here is, a student is retained if they're not deemed proficient. So that's how this thing has been used. We've gone from an EOG to now a method that uses word frequency and sentence length to determine a cut score that might hold a child back in third grade. So we must get this right. The State Department has now agreed to hire a consultant from the National Center of Assessments to try to bridge this disagreement between Renaissance Learning and Metometrics, the developers of Lexiles. And we're waiting on that. But I've shared with the State Superintendent that if they can't come to a conclusion, then I would wish to appeal the State Department of Public Instruction's recommendation to the State Board, and I would need to do that in April. So we gathered this information, we gathered this data, and I wanted to make you aware that we're going to bat for students. We feel like that something has been said that is not fair to the students in Davie County or in other places, and I'm prepared to appeal that decision to the State Board if that becomes necessary. So I wanted to make you aware of that and see if you had any questions or if you had any reservations about us continuing to pursue what we feel like is, you know, right for our students.
I appreciate you going to bat for the students of Davie as well as the students for the state, because if you teach reading, reading is not just word recognition, which is what Lexile stores are. I mean, that's what they do. But reading is fluency, it's not only in its comprehension, and those two things, when you read, are the most important things. And I appreciate you bringing it to the table at the state level because that does affect all our children. We can sit here and do words all the time, but really being fluent in our language and understanding and comprehension, that's the key. Thank you for doing that.
Dr. Hartness, did you have any other partners, other superintendents, at other LEAs that caught this as well in combined effort to the state?
Discussed this with some other LEAs. I actually have a conference call with the State Superintendent's Executive Board that I'm on tomorrow, and I'm going to be sharing this. I did not want to make this a statewide issue until the Department of Public Instruction had an opportunity to address it. I didn't want to make them look bad, you know, or bring light to something that was, you know, what we considered to be incorrect, but it's gone on and on, and now I'm sharing it with other superintendents. So I haven't gotten a lot of feedback yet. I'm afraid that this has kind of been under the radar because people are not looking at it till the end of this school year, when you have to make those decisions.
Any other comments or questions? I would also like to say that I know you've been a little modest. You have certainly led the charge on this, and we appreciate that. You got out in front of it early on, and I appreciate you, to Barbara's point, going to bat for our kids. I think at the end of the day, that'll really help, it'll help everybody here in North Carolina, all the students. But do we have any other comments or questions about that? If not, moving on, do we have, anybody have any other comments before we adjourn? Seeing none, I would just say that I appreciate everyone coming and would really like, like seeing the place full. We love all the interest. Hopefully, hopefully the snow's over and we can move on from that, move on with this calendar. But otherwise, I don't, I guess I don't have anything else, and I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
We may have one of our recognition students who came in a little late.
Okay.
Is that what's going on? Oh, dear. Sorry.
Excuse me, we don't address.
I'm sorry. I didn't misinterpret.
During the board meeting, but we're about to adjourn. If you'd like to come up and talk to any board member, I'm sure they'll be happy to talk to you. We have a sign-up process for your next meeting, so if you want to address the board publicly, then you sign up and you'll get recognized. You're welcome.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn? We have a motion by Mr. Drexler, do we have a second? We have a second by Ms. Horn. All in favor? Motion carries 7-0. We adjourn. Thank you.